Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Valentine, would you please, yes?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, poll call, please.
Devana?
Here.
Jenna?
Here.
Gabriella?
Here.
Oliver Tree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Does council have any changes they would like to make to the agenda? Not? Entertained motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Call of vote?
Devana?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Gabriella?
Yes.
Oliver Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy item and staff reports. Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Item four, petitions or communications are all overridden. We do have a couple of people that have signed up. Ms. Westmoreland?
What do I do?
Probably just maybe come and stand right over here.
Hello. My name is Peggy Westmoreland, and I am a diabetic. I've always been a diabetic. I'm insulin dependent. I'm covered under the ADA. I can have city council make juice available for me, just because I have diabetic. Even though you don't have diabetes, I do. I don't do that. I brought my own. It's easier that way. Oh, yeah, I'm here to talk about the deck that was removed from Moose's. And I'm completely against that. I am covered under the ADA, so is Steve Hammer. But I do not weaponize the ADA. Because of my diabetes, my right foot is broken. It just broke. I didn't even feel it. I just heard a crunch, and it's broken. Nothing to be done about it. It was the arch. Nothing to be done about it. I can't roller skate anymore. That means Skate Land isn't accommodating me. Yet I'm not here to gripe about Skate Land not accommodating me. I go to restaurants. I have to order Diet Coke. Sixteen ounces of regular Coke put me over the edge and into a coma. I don't, I'm not here to complain about Diet, uh, regular Coke being sold at restaurants. Because I'm not going to weaponize the ADA for my own personal agenda to get your attention. And that's what I feel that Steve Hammer has done. He has weaponized his ADA in order to just be a bully. He has tried to be a bully with, uh, what was it called? The lunchbox? And with, uh, Bella Luna's. But he had to move on because historic buildings are not covered under the ADA. Now, accommodating is a good thing. Do you want to know how many people are in wheelchairs or need tranches to walk around? Stand out on Main Street during the Halloween trick-or-treat street, you'll see adults and children. Children grow up. They're not going to grow out of the wheelchair. They're going to get a bigger wheelchair. However, that deck did have a ramp built onto it to accommodate ADA. You can't keep building bigger ramps because one person got too large. Uh, even though obesity is covered under the ADA, there's still a big logic, is what I'm trying to say. Use some reason and logic. Accommodation is adding to something to make it more convenient for everyone. It is not taking away from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate how it works. Julie, if you want, there's some open chairs over here.
Yes, I just didn't want to interrupt.
Next, we have Gary Deal.
Thank you, council members, for hearing me tonight. I just want to make a point to bring out that I'm not here to put anybody on defense. I'm here as a taxpayer. I know there's concerns that everybody has, but I take pride in the community. And my subject is regarding the tennis courts. I love tennis. I've been playing tennis since I was in high school. So we go back many decades. It took decades to get these tennis courts built. We struggled, and a lot of people came together to get those tennis courts built. And I have pictures to show what, what it looks like now. And I'll pass, I'll be happy to pass these around. I took some shears out there and started cutting some of those trees that are, are growing on the interior side of the courts. Not exterior, interior. Now, what's going to happen here? I don't know who knows how much those courts were. I think it was hundreds of thousands of dollars to build those. It's going to take maybe a couple of years before those roots go under those courts, and those courts are gone. I've asked twice in a row for two years now, somebody address that issue, and nope, it's fallen on dead leaves. I finally took my shears out there, and I spent hours cleaning that court out. And I still have to go up there to remove some of those. But my concern here is, does, does anybody care about the investment that was done to those courts to get it to this point for the community? Because this is an asset. It's money, and it's falling by the wayside little by little every day. Thank you. I'll let you all pass that around so you'll look. I have my shares. You'll see that it's just pathetic what the courts have gone to just a matter of few years.
If you would, is that the tennis court? Which tennis court?
At the golf course. And I've asked the golf course personnel, and they pointed at the city. I'd asked the city, and they just throw their hands up and say, wow, it's still a golf course. There's still the city. So, you know, it's, this is always, I'm a native of Trinidad. And, and you know what's sad about all of this is that it's always finger, finger pointing. You know, we never get anywhere because we take one step forward and then everything starts to fall back again. And, and I hate to see this half-lives tennis courts, because in my lifetime, I probably won't see new courts again. I just turned sixty. So I don't think we'll ever see brand-new tennis courts in this town again. So if we lose this, that's it for the tennis courts. And I'm just telling everybody, those, the roots on those trees are growing. There's one court, the other court I haven't even touched yet. So if somebody wants to go up there and look to see what I said, these pictures don't include the second court. These pictures just include the first court. So I'd really like somebody to come to the forefront and just make notes what Trinidad's already invested in this. This money had to come from taxpayers and other people to support this. It's a poor investment after two years. The second issue is, I have an eighty-nine-year-old mother. Fourth of July weekend, we decided to park over here on Commercial Street and walk under the bridge on our beautiful, you know, walk that we have down there. Only to find that the bottom of that Commercial Street Bridge was flooded with at least a foot and a half to two feet of water on Fourth of July weekend. Now, I think to myself, when tourists come here and they're looking for the gems in Trinidad, they're going to have to go underwater to find those gems. Because that, that whole thing was flooded. And people were walking through there, and then they'd stop and have to walk back to wherever they came from. I just think, and this is not the first time that this has happened. This has gone on for quite some time. This is another issue that's not being addressed. Now, I'm not here to complain. I'm just here to make the council aware that these are issues that I think everybody else has concerns about, but nobody wants to come up here and say something about it. They gripe about it. Well, I thought, I don't want to be just, you know, somebody that complains about it on the outside. I want to come out here and see what can council do. You know, I hear this, we're overwhelmed. We don't have enough people in the city working. Well, you know, I understand that there's, you know, there's issues all over the world if we look for them. But where are the answers? You know, what is anybody doing about these things? This is reflected on the city of Trinidad. So I hope, my, my point here is, I have many things to do tonight, but I finally thought my stuff and lying to get out here and talk to you guys about this, because I feel this is very important. So I hope this doesn't fall on deaf ears. It's, I hope that the city can look into this and try to rectify some of, you know, at least those tennis courts, for one thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Are we closed?
Yes.
If we see Kimberly walk in again, we may want to halt the proceedings so she can freeze us. Sorry.
Do we have any hardware in excess at all up here? Or it could be hardware. It's all through Wi-Fi only?
Recording in progress.
We're trying to duplicate it. Of course, we can't with the IT guy around, yeah. Okay, back live?
You're back.
We're muted, though, Kim.
Would you check into that?
No, you shouldn't be.
You are muted, press.
To see whose responsibility that act is. Is it our responsibility as a city crew, or is it the golf course? Could you just check into that?
I will.
Um, Mayor, could I just, I'm part of the Parks and Rec Department, and the city built that, or repaved it. It was under warranty for a year after that pavement was put in in 2019. And it had started cracking months afterwards. And Greg's son was notified about it, and I believe Mike Valentine was notified about it, and nothing had happened. So it's, it's going to cost to get a new surface put on.
And I will check into that, Mayor. And Tom Beach, I was not notified about it, but Tom Beach was, and he had warranty work done on it. So, but I agree. It's, after seeing the pictures, we will have somebody up there. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody listening in tonight that would like to comment? Okay, we will move on with the consent agenda approval. Item five A, approval of regular meeting minutes of June the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Item B, approval of special events permit request, malt venus and spirituous by a benevolent and protective order of the Alx Lodge One Eighty-One, Lot Twenty South Maple Street, for July the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, do we have Clint or Shane Chavez listening in tonight? I just did see Clint on there. I believe he was.
He's muted, though.
Okay, he's there. At least, you know, he's there, okay. Item, okay. Clint, thank you for being here tonight. Item C, reappointment of Dwayne Roy to the Housing Authority Board. Uh, Mr. Roy, are you in? Item D, approval of the bills for two million eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Item E, approval of payroll, June the twenty-sixth, twenty-one through July the ninth, twenty twenty-one. We actually have two payroll periods. Uh, one was five twenty-nine to six eleven, uh, for four hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and seventy-nine cents. And then we have a six twelve through six twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, for four hundred and three dollars, uh, four hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Entertained a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Call of vote, please?
Donna?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Gabriella?
Yes.
Oliver Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, some public hearings. Item six A, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property described as original town site, Lot One Seventeen, part of Lot One, seventy feet by one hundred and sixty-eight feet. Original town site, Lot One Seventeen, north twenty feet, of east seventy feet of Lot One, City of Trinidad, Los Angeles, Colorado. Hearing is now open. Uh, Ms. Clark, are you with us tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tom Murphy has requested landmark status for his historic property located at three thirty-five East Main Street. And the Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed the application per the criteria as listed in ordinance nineteen seventy-five. The commission found that the structure was built in eighteen eighty-six, exceeding its fifty-year minimum age. The structure has historical importance, as it is associated with Delos H. Chappell, who developed the city's first water system. And the structure also has architectural importance, as the only known work of E.S. Jensen and Company of Chicago. It is also a unique blend of the shingle and queen-end styles of architecture, and contains the work of local stone naysons, the Trinidad Stone Company. Therefore, the Historic Preservation Commission recommends approval of this property as a landmark to council. And Mr. Murphy is present at the meeting to represent his application to council. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Uh, Mr. Murphy, do you have anything to add to that? I know you spoke the last time. Do you have any additions?
Sure. I, I won't tell you too many stories because I can start carrying on, but, uh, forty years ago this summer, I, I was home. I was living on campus for the summer. And I came home to visit my parents in, uh, in Mitchell, South Dakota. My dad sat me down. Did we lose it again? Anyway, he sat me down, and he said, uh, we're moving to Colorado. And I'm like, oh, I'd been here once. Helped my brother and future sister-in-law move from San Francisco, where he's going to mortuary school, to Boulder. And so I got to see Colorado, you know, the summer of seventy-seven. It was, I was like, oh, man, this is great. Because I lived on the flat plains of South Dakota. So you could see for miles and miles and miles. And, uh, my first time in the mountains was pretty cool. But, uh, my big question was, is it close to a ski resort? He's like, oh, yeah, 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 sure. Like, I will be there to visit, you know, as soon as I can. And I came in January of eighty-two. And, um, I, my, my goal is to get out of college and live in Denver and live in the big city. It wasn't my plan to, to come here and, and live in a small town, because I grew up in a town this size, and I was ready for bigger and better things. It wasn't my home, but Trinidad embraced me and, and my family, and it became my home, and I love it now. Uh, it's, it's hard to imagine forty years later, you know, I'm, I'm looking at two people and several of you that are, are lifetime members here, you know, and, and so you appreciate it too, and, and those of us that have chosen to live here. But it wasn't my choice. Originally, it wasn't, but it became, it became my home, and, and I love it. And I drive around town now, and I'm, I'm proud to be part of this community. I see people over here who are moving here because same feeling. It's like, wow, they, we're finally being discovered, although those of us that have been here discovered a long time ago. But so if you pass this, all I can say is thank you. It's, it's a blessing. So, and, and I can plan to, to use this to leverage into other things. So, thank you, guys.
Most of you have council having questions. Ms. Wrigley?
I have no questions, just a comment. You know, I know what these old buildings cost to renovate and just maintain, and I applaud you for trying, uh, attempting to do this monumental task, and it's a, it is a beautiful endeavor.
Well, I'm sixty years old, and I check my phone. I do ten to eleven thousand steps a day. Part of it is because I go upstairs, I go downstairs. I go upstairs, and I go downstairs. So it's keeping me in shape.
No, I, I, I've looked at the information. I appreciate it.
Mr. DeBonum?
No, other than, was it hard to leave the Corn Palace in Mitchell, South Dakota?
I had, I had spent so much time there, um, I was like, I was ready for something else. I saw some great basketball games there. Um, it's, people, it's a tourist trap, really, but if, in the wintertime, it's a, it's a great basketball venue, kind of. And it, and our, our, uh, our mascot is a corn, Colonel of Corn, just like in the movie Hoosiers, the Mitchell Colonels. So after eighteen years of that, I was ready to move on. So. But, but really, my dad, when he sat me down, he told me about Dr. Byber, and I'm telling, in nineteen eighty-one, I was like, huh? What? Okay.
Ms. Oliver Tree?
I, I'm just, I think this is the first private building that anyone has sought local designation as a landmark, historic landmark, and I just want to thank you for leading the way in doing that and, and for agreeing to the, the terms that it, that it means for you. But I hope that other people see what you're doing and take your exam.
Thank you.
Mr. Shu?
I agree with everybody. I think you're doing a good job, Tom, and, uh, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Finish it. In your lifetime, that's the way you want it.
It, it will, it will never end. I realize I might already have to start repainting some on the other side that's come off. I'm like, all right. Scaffolding is going back up.
No questions. I appreciate the labor of love you're doing there. It's a, it's a good landmark for the town.
Thank you.
Beautiful place. Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Murphy, you know, looking at the pictures of what it was like in its heyday. When you're said and done, it would be gorgeous.
Thank you.
Anyone that would like to speak for or against the consideration of this ordinance? Not? Closed. Item six A one, second reading of ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property described as original town site, Lot One Seventeen, part of Lot One, seventy feet by one hundred and sixty-eight feet. Original town site, Lot One Seventeen, north twenty feet, of east twenty, east seventy feet. Lot One, City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
A second? Any further discussion from council?
I have a question. I, I introduce this, so I can't move. Is that right?
No, you can move.
Okay.
There's no, there are no other questions. Call of vote, please?
Donna?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Gabriella?
Yes.
Oliver Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I'll give everybody a tour when the roof is done.
Beyond item six B, public hearing, a hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending section fourteen dash forty-five administrative adjustments of chapter fourteen, land use code, Article Four, zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, to expand upon permissible administrative adjustments. Hearing is now open. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As discussed in previous work session in the first, uh, first reading of this ordinance, we passed the land use code pre-COVID, and then COVID hit, and, and we didn't have any applications. And then as things eased up, we started getting applications in and come to find out, the six twelve roof pitch that's, uh, was put in there required for all building permits was, um, not very conducive for those people who wanted to do an addition on their homes that have a three twelve, four twelve roof pitch and were requiring six twelve. So this, uh, this ordinance kind of cleans that up and gives administrative variance, adding the language that states, uh, reduction in roof pitch that is similar and complimentary to or compatible with the principal building. Uh, we will still have to work through the overall roof pitch that requires all building permits to have a, uh, a roof pitch of equal to or greater than six twelve on new construction. So, um, it's something that we'll bring before council for discussion, but this, this helps people out who are trying to just improve their properties, and our, our ordinance is too restrictive. So put that on. Answer any questions. Okay?
Ms. Wrigley?
What's a six twelve pitch? What does that mean?
That means for every twelve inches, it rises six inches. So every twelve, so six twelve is basically four to five degrees. Like six twelve. So some, so a lot of homes have four twelve where for every twelve inches, it raises four.
That's all.
Mr. DeBonum?
No, I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Oliver Tree? Mr. Shu?
Okay.
Mr. Williamson?
No questions.
Did you get all?
Nothing.
Well, you know, it's been brought forward, you know, in, in past, and what brought this forward is that there were some questions and concerns some ordinance that we have with the six twelve pitch. That might create some issues, so we took a look at it and, uh, stamped off all the change. I think it's a complimentary issue to what the code says. Anyone to speak for or against the change of the ordinance? Not? Hearing is closed. Item six B one, second reading of an ordinance amending section fourteen dash forty-five administrative adjustments of chapter fourteen, land use code, Article Four, zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, to expand upon permissible administrative adjustments. Entertained a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Kevin Han, call of vote, please?
Donna?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Gabriella?
Yes.
Oliver Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, we have done. Item eight, miscellaneous business. ADA consideration of professional services with HG Consultants Incorporated for the Trinidad study and traffic study and plan. Entertained a motion?
I so moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, this is, uh, city council was forward-thinking in seeing that we needed a traffic study done, um, and money was allocated, uh, from the marijuana funds in the amount a hundred and fifty thousand to, to perform this. CDOT, um, actually.
Sorry.
Look, he's back.
So.
Diana?
Yes.
This started for me.
Is there an A? I'd like to buy an A.
Sure, I'm glad you're on top with the.
I don't, sure, you guys, and I'm like, oh, my gosh.
Don't doze off in there.
I think I memorized all this. Three-ones, numbers.
Let us in.
We go see him.
Donna? Will you let us in again, please?
Sure, what is to?
I'll break every time.
Recording in progress.
All right, Mr. Valentine, continue.
So as I was saying, the city allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this study. CDOT, through their, uh, transportation planning region meetings, uh, got wind of us doing this, and they offered up a, a grant which we received and, and council and they offered up a, a grant which we received and, and council at our last meeting accepted them in the amount of two hundred thousand. Uh, with that, we went out for request for qualifications, uh, to interested firms, uh, consulting firms. We received five very good, uh, proposals and, uh, team of city staff went through these based on CDOT rules and regulations for, uh, awarding, these kind, kind of contracts. And HE consultant came out on top. They are actually the firm that, um, did the PEL study for Highway twelve and received an award for that study. Um, and, uh, they're, they also have onboard THK who is doing the current Fisher's Peak study for our area. So there's a, a lot of connection, a lot of, uh, information that they have on hand. So with that, I, I would answer any questions. But, uh, we have, we have, uh, a proposal that is not to exceed three hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, we did that, you know, to, to maximize the amount we have. But, uh, they will charge just based on, um, fees that they, they have for their professionals who do the contracts. So.
Is that what they mean by that's on there, the cost plus fixed fee?
Yes.
Questions from council, Ms. Beal?
I have a question, Mike, on the highway design concept. They have new exit twelve?
That's, that's part of, uh, the whole overall traffic study is to look at. CDOT requests that for the two hundred thousand, if we could look at all highway exits. When they did the overpass, there was an alternate to include an exit at mile marker twelve. So we're, we're putting that in there to revisit that.
Okay. I have one more question.
True.
So when we get this study back, is there any way they can prioritize what they feel is the, the ma- major concerns and then go down? Is that, I've never seen a traffic study. I'm just wondering.
Um, we will sit down with them and we'll have, uh, public input, council input. There's several, um, meetings scheduled to, to get public input. But that's, that's the intent of this document to actually come up with a plan moving forward that we fall back to. So, um, it'll be key to prioritize.
Okay. I have my own question.
Mr. DeBonum?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
Just there, on, uh, page one of their traffic study and plan scope services, it says June twenty twenty. Is that supposed to be June twenty twenty-one? I'm assuming at the top there.
Yes.
Okay. And then do we have any idea when, um, the time period will be when public input will be sought? Is there anything?
Uh, we'll, we'll be sca- once this kicks off, we'll be scheduling that. Um, I do not have that at this stage, but.
Okay.
We'll form a team of, you know, city personnel, um, CDOT personnel, the consultant, and we'll, we'll come up with those.
I like, I like that they are anticipating that some people will feel comfortable giving online input and then some people wanna do personal input. So I just wanna make sure we, we get the word out well in advance of those meetings so that people who have concerns can raise them.
Okay.
That's all.
Mr. Shu?
Yeah, Mike, you were on council when I was here last, the last time, uh, we did a study. Is this basically the same thing about parking spaces and will that include downtown parking and everything as far as traffic flow and different streets and stuff?
So the, the parking study is totally different. Um, and yeah, times have changed and, and the needs have changed. So, uh, although we've given them the parking study, this is more of traffic flow and traffic patterns and our one-way streets versus narrow streets versus just how everything's gonna interact with Fisher's Peak, with everything that have going on and then the highway exits. So, um, it's, it's part of it, but not fully.
Okay. So I was just, I, I just wondered if that could be a daily in it.
Mr. Williamson?
I have, I have no questions.
Mr. Goodall?
Nothing from me.
Uh, and like I said, they're supposed to, it's supposed to be an eight-month grade, which is gonna be like January, I think, or February for twenty-two. Um, what do you anticipate? Cause she was asking about the parking area. What do you, do you anticipate trying to work something with, not within this grant, but within ourselves to try and come up with the parking to go along with this so that they can plan on it?
Yes. Um, all of our, uh, current parking lots and everything will be part of the information we give them along with some possible areas that we can develop for parking.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, will this, I know that there's been talk about a welcome center. Will this give us a recommendation in an area possibly for a welcome center? Or will that be outside that scope?
We can, uh, we can bring that forward and, you know, um, I, I think it, it, it may because they're gonna look at traffic impacts on, on, on the entire area and, and where the major, uh, points we think will be. So.
Yeah, we can, if we can fit that in, I think it'd be a good idea for us to be able to look at as a council, cause that's something we've been discussing for some time as to, as to, where can we fit in a welcome center?
Sure. And then of course, I'm apologizing, Mayor, one thing that I didn't mention with any grant we go for, they ask if you've done a study. So this'll be, uh, food for that. Applications.
I believe we're gonna have enough studies for anything that comes up in the future. A lot of money here. They'll, they'll take one of the studies, they'll be still have some. We'll have enough studies for what we're, what we're looking at. Uh, any other questions from council?
Nope.
Huh? Call a vote, please.
Donna?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Trina?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Frankson?
Yes.
Yes. When do you anticipate they would start this study?
Um, as soon as, as we approve the screen, they'll start with scheduling and developing, you know, contact teams and booking and stuff. So, um, as early as tomorrow.
Okay, item eight B, resolution determining that an election is required to elect the mayor and three city council members and that such election should be held as coordinated, as a coordinated election. Just basically standard procedure every time any of our seats come around. Uh, this year it's my seat plus three others. So entertained motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Beal?
No, just, Mr. DeBonum?
No, sir.
Ms. Ogletree? Mr. Shu?
No.
Mr. Williamson?
No.
Mr. Ogletree? My name is.
Goodall? So letters of intent start in August, is that correct? For anyone that may be listening for when that time comes.
I think that's correct.
It is August. All right.
And I'm sure, uh, our city clerk on here will get something in, uh, notice. Okay. Call a vote, please.
Donna?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Trina?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Frankson?
Yes.
Ricka?
Yes. Item C is consideration of a pledge of twelve thousand five hundred dollars in support of the raised discretionary grant Southwest Chief. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Valentine?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, we've been asked, and council's been a part of a few meetings back, that we would be the sponsor for this grant. It's a, a government grant and they just need all our portal to, uh, to do this. And they're asking for a letter of support, which is, uh, included in your packet along with other, uh, communities that have offered their support. Lahana, Lamar, the Board of County Commissioners in Powers County, Garden City, Kansas, uh, Newton, Kansas, the city of Lahana. Um, I received three more today and, uh, one from Hutchence, Kansas, one from, uh, Otero County and another one that I can't come up with right now. But, um, there's a lot of support and each, each community is pledging similar to what we did for the past three grants as, uh, twelve thousand five hundred as match. So. And this, this final grant will finish that portion of the rail and I'm sure the mayor knows attending all those meetings.
What this will do is, and just to let you know, Amtrak is going to commit one million five hundred thousand dollars for this project. I think if we get this grant, it'd be like twenty-five million dollars. Cause the cost for upgrades to, uh, the rail is about a million dollars a miles, what the cost is. And this will be for the southeast portion, uh, which actually is the last thirty-four miles of jointed rail, uh, with continuous welded rail. That's the Lahana subdivision, uh, from Simroon, Kansas to Brindada, Colorado. So that's the area that, that'd be kind of the final piece for, uh, to upgrade. And, uh, it's true, but as you've noticed in your information, it's to get it up to that seventy-nine mile an hour range, uh, to travel speed. So that's, that's what about. So anyway, uh, if you have any other questions, I may be able to answer. Um, so. Ms. Beal?
No questions.
Mr. DeBonum?
No, sir.
Ms. Ogletree?
No, good luck.
Did you ever talk to them about the New Mexico area that needed to be repaired down that way? As far as that fact, what they were doing down there?
I haven't, I haven't, but I will.
I mean, I, I brought that up.
I know, I know that.
Cause I was kinda concerned that, you know, we're investing all this money and then if New Mexico doesn't do it, the line.
Well, it's, we've been investing money all the way into Lani as far as that right now.
Yeah.
So there's been a lot of upgrades in Lani, New Mexico from.
Yeah, Santa Fe.
Yeah.
But from there on, there was some issues.
Probably so. And I'm not sure who would take that up if that would be a different commission from New Mexico and Arizona.
Well, I, I know you put a meeting, so you might just kinda.
Oh, I will.
Kinda get some information on how that's going down that way too, cause that's all part of the same line.
Sure is. Probably, and I'm, I'm not sure, Michael's gonna give you this. I got a letter today, uh, from Santa Fe. So if you're on the forum, that on with the letter, go along with you.
You've got the longer one.
Okay, any other questions? Call a vote, please.
Donna?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Trina?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Frankson?
Yes.
Ricka?
Yes. Item eight D, authorization to make application for a CDOT grant to add lighting on the Riverwalk from Cedar Street, which is the historic Waterworks Building, from the historic Waterworks Building to Linden Avenue. Um, that is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, uh, I'm not sure, is Talifa on tonight?
Yeah.
There you are, who's actually.
Hi, I'm really on top of it tonight.
She's quiet and she just, you know, she sleeps. We're at the Action Twenty-two meeting and I looked over to see where she's at. She's calm. Anyway, what can you tell us?
That was a great meeting. Um, the CDOT grant is, um, for small multimodal and economic resiliency projects. Um, we chose the Riverwalk because it would be quick to implement. They were looking for shovel-ready projects. They're looking for a project that can be started within thirty days of contract execution and finished within eight months. So, um, Dean Duran is, uh, confident that his crew of nine guys can put those lights in within two months. Uh, and so it just seemed like the perfect fit. Um, right now, the Riverwalk is not lit from, there's one, um, steel light, it's a steel or a wooden pole.
Wooden.
Mm-hmm. By, um, the Waterworks Building and there are a couple of steel poles in the, um, parking lot of Toyota that may or not be affected by the flood. Julie's here to also talk about the river.
Yeah.
Um, and I think Jared is on as well in case we end up with more questions. Hard to say. Um, yeah, so I can speak to the grant itself. Um, a hundred and fifty dollars is the cap for one project. Two hundred and fifty, um, for, uh, municipalities. So there are other modules that we are talking about that are not as far along as this one. Um, but yeah, it's pitch black. I don't know if you all walk down the Riverwalk at night, but, um, it's very dark. And so this would be a really great, um, way to increase the usage of that path, increase our active transportation in general in the town, outdoor recreation. Lots of good stuff can come from it. The light poles we're looking at are the ones that are on the Riverwalk in Chino Park, which have the shield. So they are, um, dark sky approved. Um, they don't shoot the light up, you know, it's just down. And, um, gosh, what else? Uh, any questions?
Questions for council, Ms. Beal?
How susceptible are those lights gonna be to vandalism?
I mean, the ones in Chino Park seem awesome.
Have we had good luck with those?
We have. Um, I'd like to say things are vandal-proof, but nothing else. We do our best to keep them up and, yeah.
And poles are easier cause it's just flat that you can spray paint over versus, um, maybe like brick is a little bit harder.
But this, this, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a statement. This seems like a natural progression cause we're doing the Riverwalk and Greenway Foundation is doing that. So.
And Josh Schumacher has written a letter of support. So this is in collaboration with the River Visioning and not at all, um.
Confident. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. DeBonum? LED efficient, correct?
I believe so. Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
No questions.
Mr. Shu?
The, the cost, do you put that, are underground? Is that gonna include all the grant for that? Cause that's a long ways for underground.
Right. It's about point six miles. So the conduit and wire is expensive, the concrete, um, castions and the bolts. And so that's all included in the project. And then, um, our match would be in kind, just letting Dean Duran and his nine guys be able to do that as well as engineering to stick the utilities and such.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions.
Good all. Great job. Thank you.
You know, I know that, uh, we had brought this up actually, I talked to Mr. Valentine sometime back about doing some lighting and it's just happened to this COVID bill this last year that all this money has been, um, allocated and, you know, like you were saying, you know, for shovel-ready projects and about as shovel-ready as you can get. So, um, good job and, uh, applying for that. Julie?
Uh, I was Julie Knitson, Purgatory Watershed Partnership. I just wanted to speak on behalf of all the volunteers that I work with and the top two requests are more trash cans and lighting along the Riverwalk. So this has broad support from volunteers in the community as well.
Anyway, it's gonna be a tremendous project today. Okay. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I want you to get on the Garfield Lights.
We have to bring up lighting.
Well, at least he didn't ask her about bigger fish or lighting. So that's a plus.
Okay, any further, uh, discussion? Call a vote, please.
Donna?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Trina?
Yes. I said yes.
Oh.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Frankson?
Yes.
Ricka?
Yes. On item nine, council reports, Ms. Beal?
The only report I have is I gave you all the information via email, via audio data, via, uh, last one regarding my report from SERSA. And I'd really like to, um, reaffirm that I think there's, SERSA has a training for identity theft, for ransom. And I don't know if our IT guy has gotten that training, but that's really a problem with all municipalities. And I think we really need to concentrate on trying to avoid that because everything in our losses with SERSA, everything has gone down except for ransomware, I, IT. IT issues with people getting into systems and, and claims against police departments. So I think we really need to be aware of that. The good news is because of COVID, they are, they paid out less, eight point five million less than they thought they were on property claims. So let's hope that the two offset each other.
My first thing on top of that information, it's good to know.
Yeah. I'd really like to, I don't know what the city does as far as a SIRS representative, if it's mandated that a Haiti employee has to do that. But I would be interested in having that continually on, to do that in the future. That was an annual meeting, so.
I'll second that motion. I'm sorry.
You know, everybody hates insurance, but that's.
Right, yeah. You did a good job for us in that. You worked, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. DeBong?
I received a phone call the other day, Allison Sawaya, who oversees the management at Village East. She said she's being overwhelmed with feral cats. And, I mean, she said to the point where there's like hundreds. And I said, well, that's, is that animal control issue? She contacted Noah's Ark. They would, I don't know if they have the capacity to take all of them, but they said they would be willing to, you know, rescue, I guess, or take some of them in. But is that animal control, are they?
It's both.
We can recon trap and take them to those.
She asked me if I would mention that. Yes, ma'am?
And actually, at a recent Trinidad Community Foundation Awards event, I believe it was Noah's Ark that was awarded a grant for addressing the feral cat issue as well.
But what they do, Eli, and for public information, feral cats, they bring them in, they spay and neuter them. And if they're not adopted, they take them out to something called, a program called Barn Buddies. So these feral cats go to farms and ranches. That's where they're, they are rehomed, so to speak. And if they kept, some feral cats cannot be trained to be domestic. So what you have to do is let them out again, hopefully in years coming, the population will decrease. And from what I'm talking to Noah's Ark, they have been decreasing every year for some reason. Somebody had a cat out there that they didn't take care of. Lot of being, there they go.
Well, we got feral cats, we got raccoons.
Yeah.
Ms. Ogle, please?
Boy, I had a couple of.
Go ahead.
I interviewed Chris Ablin today and they're having the 21st Annual Back-to-School Supply Drive. And she was wondering if, she submitted a letter to the city if they would be willing to donate. They match a thousand, for every thousand dollar donation, they'll match a thousand. And I think last year, COVID, they had maybe seven thousand dollars in donations from miscellaneous people. So I didn't know what the protocol was. Has the city donated in the past to the back-to-school? Because they, they actually, there's eleven schools that they actually help. And also some in Colfax County, they have their own supply drive in Worthno County.
Do you, should you get ahold of her?
Yeah.
Tell her to get ahold of Lou's Implement, Trinidad Community Foundation.
Foundation.
They're on, they're second round of.
Okay. One more thing. I interviewed Fred Darpino, he's the sculpture, he did the Sister Blandina statue. And he's going to be here the 18th for the ceremony. Good interview. He's world renowned, he's done hundreds of sculptures all over the world. He has a studio in Manitou Springs. It's good to hear you.
That's it? That's about it? So good to you.
The letter that was circulated among us from a local citizen about fireworks, I really appreciated that that person spoke so highly of the display. It was amazing, it was really well done. And then they went on to also talk about the wildcat firework displays that were going on around the city. And I did notice, I, there were things going off until after midnight on Commercial Avenue, or Commercial, yeah. Yeah, Colorado Avenue. And, and I thought that he made a good point that we do need to make people more aware of the fact that it's actually not legal to do that. And that, I kind of get the sense that we just kind of go, it's the Fourth of July and it's going to happen. But I think that it raises the awareness about noise in the city and that people do have issues with sleeping and health. And we do as, need to be neighborly when it comes to noise.
Animals too.
Animals, yeah. I will say this, where I live, I had a hundred and eighty degree view of town. And there were fireworks just going across, all the way across town. They had the regular fireworks downtown, but they were all over the place.
You know, I think with the drought and the way things have been in the past, people have been really good about it. I think with all the moisture, people went a little over the top this year thinking they were going to make up for loss in the years. That's kind of what it looked like, but that's kind of my take on what happened.
Anything else, Ms. Ogle?
No.
It's true.
Mike, just one or two questions on updates. Is Noah's Ark on schedule? And how about the Santa Fe Trail? Because I'm tired because he's hanging down. Are we getting some, that close to finishing?
We're getting closer. Noah's Ark, I think I reported the last time that we had an issue getting the actual doors from factories. And that's put us back. I'm going to say Noah's Ark should be done in about two weeks. Santa Fe, sorry.
Something, I'm sorry.
Santa Fe Trail, they started pouring, they got the roadway basically degrade, or they had it degrade and then we had a major storm and it all washed down. They've got it recompacted and they started forming curb and gutter, which is a good sign. So, I don't know the tentative date on that, I haven't asked them that. But with curb and gutter, once they get that done, then in comes the asphalt.
How much did they raise that downside?
Around that curve, the highest point, they raised the, the elevated curve about fourteen inches on one end. Lifted it up so that hopefully it then gets sucked into the curb during winter.
For cats.
It used to be a highway, speeds were, you know, highway speeds around that bend, but, yeah.
Kids love that. Mr. Williams?
I agree with Housewoman Ogle on appreciating the letter. I do think if there's anything we can do at all about the wildcat fireworks, I think it would be beneficial on a lot of levels. Mike, I do want to ask concerning several weeks back, the discussion of the alternative chemicals for mosquito control or potentially contacting towns for alternative methods, how is that coming?
So I know that Public Works has been in touch with the Health Department. And the product that we have on the shelf is safe for use according to them. They said finish using that. I know that council directed us to move forward with that, so that's, that's the direction we're going. We have done a lot more of the, I'm sorry, I'm losing the name. The donuts in the, in the standing water, we've been hitting those pretty heavily. As a matter of fact, there should have been a notice in the paper, we're starting that tomorrow, the spring, once a week. Instead, instead of twice a week, so.
Anything else? Mr. DeBong?
All right, so nothing from Parks and Rec Board. They put the meeting off a month. I think next month I'll have a really good report on the Santa Fe Trail 200th celebration. The mayor, myself, and Commissioner Haas was on the meeting with the Fishers Peak Group last week. I think it was last week, the weeks really run together. What a great and informative meeting. I encourage everyone to visit fisherspeakstatepark.com. That is the website. They got a lot of really good information on there if you have not visited that. I'm hoping they're going to upload a lot of the maps and some of the future stuff that they put on there. I'm hoping it gets uploaded to that site because it was very good information. The timeline for the master plan looks like it's going to be done between the first and second quarter of next year. Environmental, Bill Mingle with the environmental planning lead, they're still doing a lot of research and data collection. And the geologists and archaeologists are still looking at the nesting birds. We have active nests with the golden eagles and falcons and whatnot up there. So a lot of that work is still going on. I believe that their number one priority right now, it looks like as far as the next trail that's going to go in, is probably going to be the one, two. The top of Fishers Peak, that is going to be between a seven and eight mile trail. It's going to have around three thousand feet in elevation gain. That's going to be a hike right there. They asked if they were going to have a camping area halfway for some people, but I don't think that's in the plan. We're also working with New Mexico on how they're going to get Sugar Rita in this park connected. I was real happy to see that happening. On the public comments, there's been over two hundred and fifty public comments. Everyone is welcome if you visit the website to take the survey. They're pushing over four hundred people have taken that survey. They're still looking for information and input from everybody that wishes to go on to the website and take the survey. If I missed anything, I'm sure the mayor will jump in on that, and that's pretty much what I have.
The only I could probably say is that I do know that, you know, the, the leadership group, we have wanted the master plan to be done, finished by the end of this year. And then we're supposed to approve, the leadership is supposed to approve it the first, I think, January of next year. So you write it by the first or second quarter. First quarter, I think, is what we're shooting for to get that done. But, no, he did a pretty good job of explaining everything and things are moving along well. There's a lot of progress being made. They're also planning on working on a, I think, an additional twenty miles of roadways, not roadways, but hiking trails for 2022. But of course, the hike to the peak.
Yep, that's the big push.
I think it's, I think the anticipate that's going to take a good, what, eight hours, I think, to do that? It's going to be a.
Definitely set all day, for sure.
It's going to be a trek. From my end, House Bill 1215 was signed by the governor. That was the, 1215 was the, lost my track, it was about there. 1215 is the.
Law enforcement?
Law enforcement. That goes through the community foundation. So anyway, that was, that was signed, that was signed by the governor. I attended the signing last week of 7/22 trouble. That was the Amtrak or the district for the new rail, new rail district up and down I-25. The July, the Fourth Parade on Sunday was really great, other than it was hot, got a little sunburned. You probably see my forehead, but it worked pretty good. The, you know, Colonel Springer from Fort Carson was here, as well as the marching group and the color guard. And then they had a barbecue afterwards and it was pretty well attended. Up and down the people in the street side after the reger parade, the water parade. Boy, the, I was noticing the people downtown, the kids and the people, they were ready for that water. They had tubs sitting on the side with their water, gets ready to go, so. But it was, it was a very nice event. Just to let you know that Brad Henley is retiring from CPW. He was one of the guys that was part of the Fishers Peak group. And there's a Mr. Martin that has taken his place. He retired at the end of June. Exit 11, there's a groundbreaking for exit 11 at 10:00 AM, the deportive entry. On, I wrote down the date, what date was that?
I'm not sure about the groundbreaking, but the pre-construction meeting is this Thursday.
Groundbreaking is the nineteenth, I believe.
Okay.
I believe it's the nineteenth, it's a Monday, I believe. But we'll confirm that, but the, the pre-construction that is correct, but groundbreaking is actually coming up. Just to let everybody know, I know there's always been a lot of questions about the Amtrak structure that I've been working on with Amtrak and CDOT, been going back and forth. Amtrak is ready to go. CDOT definitely is holding the money. You know, I talked to the gentleman today and we'll have a, I guess, a final by the end of the week as to when they're probably going to be able to do the, start construction on that. Now, if I could, this guy's came down with the director that time?
Assistant Director Rich Zamora.
Zamora. He called me today and he said he would have answers for us by the end of the week. So I'm in contact with Rob Eaton from Amtrak because he wants to move on. Because Amtrak is going to do the building and they're ready to do it. And they want to get it done before the snow flies. That's their concern. That's pretty much all I have. If you want to talk, I'm not sure if you want to talk about a conversation with Mr. Martinez on that broadband issue.
I can, sure.
That was all I have. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, it's exciting that exit 11 is moving forward. They're having the pre-construction meeting, which means they have a contractor onboard and all the required documentations in place to move to this point. So that, that's a good thing, and that's this Thursday. It's a good thing. It's going to be a bit of a challenge to get through there, but through the process of design, they staged it so that all access will be open at all times. It may be a little bit circuitous to get through there, but it will be open. So we can, you know, get to all those businesses out there. And then, as the mayor stated, we had a discussion with Antonio Martinez, who is the, from the office of, the IT office for the state. There's an acronym, there's a name for that, but I'm sorry. It was a good discussion. Part of the discussion was whether we can, you know, tie into the fiber running up and down I-25. If you've been north, you can see them installing those lines. What color are they?
Yeah, yeah, we know, we know.
Bronco colors, that's what.
I was surprised that we had the word circuitous in the. I know, but then we had it blue and orange. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I brought that over. But it's exciting that he put me in touch while gave me the name of the CDOT person who's in charge of installing that fiber. And he's gotten back to me and, and we can, as a city, connect in that, that fiber. So that's a first step. We can get a fiber into town. And the next step is whether, you know, we can run our own loop and actually have our own ISP. Or if we, but that's a, that's a good point. And then he also connected me with the city manager of Longmont, who has gotten back to me and were trying to connect us to have a discussion. Because Longmont was one of the first cities to actually do their own fiber as a utility. And according to their website, they're fastest in the nation, but, you know. The internet is always true and accurate. But anyway, let's leave it at that. So it's exciting. A lot of, a lot of entities, the federal government, the state, everybody wants to put some money toward broadband. So we're trying to position ourselves to be ready. Hands out buckets when it starts falling to catch that money and put it toward a good use. Hands out buckets when it starts falling to catch that money and put it toward a good use. And just to remind council, next Monday, July 12th, we have the retreat scheduled. We'll get a little more information out to you here shortly, but it's gonna be up at the community center. And it'll be, it'll be holiday on bringing department heads in every 15, 20 minutes to bring you up to date. And then we'll have a good update on their issues and then kind of work through on the broader vision of council in the afternoon. That's July 12th, community center. We're anticipating start time to be 3:00. If you have any questions?
Coffee and drinks?
At least some, yeah.
You know, talking about this broadband thing, that's why it's really important that we attend meetings. This broadband thing came around through the attendance of me attending that Action 22 meeting four weeks ago. This Mr. Martinez got up and spoke about broadband and I asked him the question at that point if we were maybe possibly be able to tie in. He said there's a good chance of that. So then we connected with him, set up the meeting. And, you know, that's why I say it's important that we, as a council, can try to get up and to some of these meetings and keep your ears open and your eyes open. Because sometimes you find those tidbits. That's not the first time that that's happened, that I've been able to do that. To get people connected here in Trinidad. So it's, this could be a big opportunity. We just have to wait and see how that, that comes down. Like we talked about broadband and what it, what we need to do, what to do for our community is really, really important. So.
Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor. Just two quick items. I sent you an email earlier today. The mayor had asked me to report to all of you on the legislation regarding outlawing plastic bags. And there was an article in the Denver Post, and so I sent that to all of you. I hope that you received that. Everybody's looking at me kind of quizzically like nobody. Okay, good. There was an article in the Denver Post that I think answers all the questions. So you know it's the target of this legislation, that plastic bags will be forbidden by 2024. So it'll be interesting to see how that, how that develops and how that goes through. The only other thing I wanted to let you know is that you received an email, all of council did, earlier today from an applicant who is, who shall remain nameless, or applicants, who have a, who have a quasi-judicial matter pending before you in the near future. And it was just kind of an informational email. I let them know that they are not to do that and have open communication with council when they have a quasi-judicial matter pending before you. I just wanted to let you know that was done. I of course didn't want to hit reply all and run afoul of meeting provisions, like we always ask you guys about to do. But I just wanted to let you know that email was responded to when you're looking at emails. But that's all I have, Mayor, Councilor. Oh, one other thing, and that is, I'm sorry, I may not be able to go to the retreat on July 12th. I am currently scheduled for a jury trial in district court here and I really thought the trial was going to go away. But it doesn't look like it's going to. So if the trial goes away, I will be there. If I'm not there, I will be in trial. So.
If you have any information that you may not be there, it's gonna be to Mr. Valentine.
Sure, sure. And help let the city manager spin on anything else. Just kidding, just kidding.
I just wanted to say I think the horse on this roundabout looks great.
It is amazing. If we could offset the directional signs just a little to give us a better view, I'm just kidding.
Now, Mayor, are you thinking maybe putting maybe a couple of lights up there, maybe?
There are lights. Let's see, look at it, see if it needs, if they need to be directed.
Let me to light that up at nighttime. It really made it stand out.
It is amazing though.
Okay, item 11, executive section. For conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice. Swans specifically go questions under CRS Section 24-6-402 for B. Use of public property and ADA compliance motion to go into.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call vote?
Donna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Teresa? Yes.
How about you?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Wellington?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and take about five minutes, so a break.